I declare that this public hearing is now open for the subject, on the subject of the school board's FY 2018 proposed budget slash CIP. Any citizen who has signed up to speak on this subject may do so when called upon. It looks like we have six individuals who'd like to speak. You will have three minutes to speak and I will keep the time. The lights on the monitor will indicate your progress. The yellow block will signify that you should sum up your position. Red indicates your time is up and you should stop. Please use proper decor and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. Please give your name and address for the record when you approach the podium. Our first speaker is Riley O'Casey.
Is that six minutes? Messing me up, I'm used to three. Good evening Chairman, Vice Chairman, Mrs. Jesse, Board members, Dr. Walts. My name is Riley O'Casey and my address is on file. This has been somewhat of an uneventful budget season. The additional revenue from the state and county was a pleasant surprise, so I would like to thank the superintendent and his staff for modifying the budget to include a step increase for employees. I would also like to thank you, school board members, for advocating for and supporting the step increase. In a perfect world, with adequate funding, all of our critical unmet needs would be met. Class sizes would be small enough to meet the needs of all students. Every school would have the technology resources needed to enhance the success of our students. There would be a nurse in every school and they would be paid the salary they deserve. Special education caseloads would be decreased in order to adequately meet the needs of our special needs students. The caseloads of our professional school counselors, social workers, school psychologists, and behavioral specialists would be lowered so that the needs of all students are always met. New schools would be easily built and the evaluation applicant tracking system in our HR department would be available. The work done this budget season is a huge step in the right direction, but there is more to be done. I would respectfully request that the school division and the school board make certain that the changes made to the salary scale are clarified for all employees. What will be the impact of adding a step to the top of the salary scale at the same time removing step one on grades one through 12? This question must be answered for all employees to understand the complex process of a step increase. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kate Olson Flynn.
Good evening Board members. My name is Kate Olson Flynn. I live at 3158 Ravana Court in Lakewood, 22192. I'm here to speak on behalf of my two daughters who attend Old Bridge Elementary and Lakewood Middle School and for the many parents on the east side of the county, primarily in Lakewood, Lakewood and Woodbridge, who are concerned about how the money is being allocated in the budget. Last week I attended lovely Mrs. Jesse's town hall meeting and we learned a lot about, of the important information about the board, its goals, and its budget priorities. And from many comments and conversations with other families in the community, it has come to our understanding that our largest concern is the lack of money that is being earmarked in the budget for the east side of the county, for Lakewood and Woodbridge in particular. We need more money for these schools. The financial disregard has left our schools with issues of not only overcrowding with many more trailers and with buildings and equipment that are outdated and in disrepair. Western parts of the county have gotten brand-new schools, state-of-the-art facilities, and what do we get, additional classrooms to accommodate more students with more needs. There's been no money reserved in the budget to put our schools in parity to the schools in the western part of the county for better cafeterias that can accommodate all the students and they're not eating lunch at 10 o'clock in the morning, new auditoriums, theaters, gymnasiums, computers, and such. Just putting classrooms in our schools doesn't fix the problem of underserving, of our underserving and underserving our students in this area. One good example of this inequity is the fact that Woodbridge High School was stripped of its specialty program. Because Colgan High School is new and its state-of-the-art amenities and classrooms, the Center for the Fine and Performing Arts was moved from Woodbridge and Woodbridge was left with nothing, no specialty program to distinguish it or give it value and prestige to the school so that the students feel pride, have a reason to stay, and are encouraged to attend. It is as if Woodbridge was punished for being old and being located in a crowded part of the county. And you need to revise, we would hope that you revise or think about the future budgets to build new middle school, a new high school, in addition to new elementary school and classroom additions. Because when all these students come from the new schools and the new classrooms, where are they going to go? They need more middle schools and high schools to accommodate all these students. Woodbridge and Garfield High Schools are already the fourth and the 11th largest high schools in the state, according to the Department of Education. And for this reason, we propose that, I know the 13th school has already been allocated, perhaps in the future budget you can have a new high school, middle school, think about putting it in our side of the county so that we can accommodate all these students and have new state-of-the-art facilities for them. This financial oversight is hurting our students from all walks of life that attend our schools in our area. Please consider revising the budget or thinking about future budgets to include the immediate needs of Lakewood and Woodbridge communities, particularly if you want to narrow the achievement gap so that all students succeed. I thank you for listening and for your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Olson Flynn. Our next speaker is Mark Rafa.
Hello. My name is Mark Rafa and my address is on file. Good evening, members of the board, and I'm here tonight to discuss the budget. And we have a good start on the budget, but we still need to do more. A 2.8% increase for teachers and staff is a good start, but they deserve more. We cannot retain our current teachers if we do not pay them what they deserve. Teachers must become our first priority. They have the daily interaction with our students. To offset the cost of hiring and paying teachers what they deserve, we need to think of cost savings. We need to rethink the schools we're building. We build very expensive and expansive schools that are very inefficient. We need to start thinking about building vertically, which is lower cost. We also need to build functionally, eliminate waste in these schools and what we put in these schools. How many flat panel TVs are in Colgan High School? Are they needed? Do they provide value? We also need to look at our office space. We need to look at what we're going to do with the Kelly Leadership Center here. As many companies are implementing measures to reduce their facilities costs, we should not be looking to expand office space. We need to reduce our office space. We also need to rethink our buying habits and stop buying depreciating assets. This can be a lot of savings, millions of dollars in savings in your IT costs if you stop buying depreciating assets. We also need to evaluate programs. For those programs that are not providing value, we need to look at fixing them. If they can't be fixed, eliminating those programs. We also need to evaluate our staffing. We have the lowest percentage of teachers in our school system, but we have the highest percentage of non-school-based management and leadership positions. Hiring two new directors, new instructional coaches at nearly $1.6 million, doubling the professional development, and as I've seen in the supplemental budget, eight secretaries for each member of this school board is excessive and wasteful. We need teachers, we need highly-paid teachers. In closing, I have heard from members of this school board that they have all the authority over the budget they receive, but it's time you assume the accountability. A board that has all the authority and no accountability is ineffective, and ineffective school board is not something taxpayers should be funding. Thank you.
The next person to speak is Gina Bellamy.
Good evening Vice Chair Jesse, Dr. Walts, and the school board. My name is Gina Bellamy and my information is on file. First, I must thank Dr. Walts and Ms. Darlington and the superintendent's staff for their unwavering support of school nurses. We were thrilled when we learned we were getting 6.5 new nurses. I am concerned, however, of our ability to hire the best candidate. We're struggling to keep the staff that we have. Salary remains an issue. The salary of an incoming school nurse is between $50,000 and $55,000 a year. May seem reasonable. Let me put it in perspective. According to the 2017 Budget Manual for School Personnel, the average salary of an executive secretary in a high school is $58,000. The bookkeeper in a high school is $58,000. The custodian, three, is $58,000. I believe this represents a serious disparity in pay and responsibility. The minimum requirement to be an executive secretary is a high school diploma, GED, and pass a typing test. The minimum requirement to be a bookkeeper or custodian is a high school diploma or GED. The minimum requirement to be a school nurse is a bachelor's degree, pass a national licensure exam, and keep the mandated continuing education hours required by the Virginia Board of Nursing. Not only are the minimum job requirements vastly different, but the responsibilities of the job do not compare. The school nurse is the only occupation I could see that is listed in the classified pay scale that requires a degree, passing a national test, and continued education hours. To me, there's no greater responsibility than caring for the health of our schoolchildren. Our responsibility is to support student learning by removing or addressing healthcare barriers to make the student available to learn. Your school nurse is the sole health professional in that building. I am respectfully asking the school board to follow the recommendation of the independent consulting company you hired and place the school nurses on a certified pay scale commensurate with their education and their experience. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Debbie Rupert.
My name is Deborah Rupert. My information is on file. Good evening, Dr. Walts, Vice Chair Jesse, and school board members. While I too celebrate the effort you are making and sharing to support and hire world-class educators, I am requesting with a full heart you provide the same due diligence for the licensed and certified professional school nurses. Please let this be addressed this budget cycle. Clearly, the professional nurses represented here daily have the lives and wellness of thousands of children in our hands each day, dealing with minor needs to the profoundly severe encompassing both physical and mental illnesses. Some of these are your own children and grandchildren. I myself have walked in faith with the school division leadership for 16 years, waiting to be given the appropriate respect, professional and certified pay adjustments that should be in place to recruit and retain the best to our school health team. Just as you do with our educators, our autonomous work requires the best. There is no room for mediocrity. I implore you to consider the wealth of knowledge and clinical experience we bring to the school division and to the lives of all of our students, their families, and the staff that we serve. Each school team member deserves respect and acknowledgement. I long to see the role we play just as an appreciated priority. Lives are fragile and we are parties of one in our buildings, choosing with our intellect, our wisdom, and our skill the best practices to collaborate truly with the school team to ensure our students have the healthiest and most academically rewarding days possible. Please consider our role as professionally necessary in support of our world-class educators because together we do great things for students and families. Thank you.
I assume those are nurses. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Teresa Polk.
My name is Teresa Polk and my address and information is on file. Good evening, Vice Chairman Jesse, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. I must first say a special thank you to the superintendent's staff, Mrs. Goss, Ms. Darlington, and Dr. Walts, for their unwavering support of school nurses and the school health services program. I am very grateful for all of the improvements we have experienced under Dr. Walts' leadership to include the 6.5 new positions recommended. They are desperately needed and we do say thank you. I am a retired military officer who served honorably for 20 years, and I now serve honorably as the supervisor of school health services with the responsibility of managing the health services to nearly 90,000 students in Prince William County schools, with a staff of 91 professional school nurses, which includes one male nurse. The nurses are 91 highly-skilled professionals, many of whom also served in various branches of the military. These nurses, as well as their colleagues, chose to come to Prince William County schools because of their love of children and their desire to help students succeed. While many of them were not initially satisfied with their initial offer, salary offer, they accepted the challenge and many remain. 91 school nurses, 80 with BSN, Bachelor of Science or BSN degrees, 13 of whom also have master's degrees. 11 school nurses have associate degrees and one school nurse has a hospital diploma in nursing. The bottom line is all 91 are professionals having passed a state board of nursing licensure exam, which has to be renewed every two years by obtaining CEUs as required by the board of nursing. Why are our nurses not receiving the respect, professionalism, and compensation that they have earned? They have done above and beyond what is expected, endured CPS complaints, board of nursing complaints, slander in the media, and still they stand. As the proud leader of this group of professionals, I ask you to consider where Prince William County schools would be without them. We cannot afford to lose them. However, we must find a way to give them their due. When? Now. How? Move them to the certified pay scale. Who? You have the power to say yes or no. I hope that regardless of your decision, you will have clarity on who your school nurses really are, world-class school nurses in Prince William County schools. Thank you. Nurses, please stand.
Our next speaker is Ryan Yates.
My name is Ryan Yates and my information is on file. I'm here to raise several concerns over the proposed 39 classroom addition that would impact three Lakewood community elementary schools. I have six primary points. First, little to no public input was solicited from the Lakewood community for the proposed expansions. The first time the public was made aware of the proposal was at the school advisory council meetings in January where the county and architect made a proposal to school staff and parents. Plans had already been drawn up and no input was requested from the small group of attendees. Two, the proposed expansion would expand our small neighborhood schools by over 50%. Lakewood Elementary, for example, was built for a capacity of 535 students. The proposed expansion would increase the school capacity to nearly 850 students without providing any additional kitchen, cafeteria, or PE room for students. Instead of providing relief from overcrowding, these expansions would further compact student populations, which will lead to high-stress learning environments. Three, Lakewood Elementary just recently finished a two-year renovation, which created an environment where students had to learn in a construction zone. Even after the renovation, all of our second-grade students are still in outside trailers. The county should have incorporated classrooms then to address the trailer situation. Now, less than one year after the completion, a 13-classroom addition has been proposed for this school, which far exceeds the needs of the school. The only addition that should be considered by the school board would be of a size to eliminate trailers from these elementary campuses. Four, the newly-completed renovation for Lakewood Elementary, a grass field was built out and developed for school and after-school recreation. Now, this taxpayer-funded recreation area will be paved over with a new parking lot in the proposed school expansion plan. It is important to note that in the Alcoquan District, it has the lowest park and recreation space in the entire county. High-demand recreation space should not be sacrificed for parking lots and unnecessary excess classrooms. It is widely known that the Old Bridge Corridor is one of the most impacted transportation corridors in the entire county. Spring Ridge Road, Hedges Run, and Mohican Road have only one way in and out. These expansions will add incredible traffic stress to the community. Currently, schools witness chaos every morning with traffic congestion, illegal U-turns, and road rage incidents that put residents, students, and the community and the faculty at risk. Lakewood does not have the capacity for 50% increases in traffic, in school traffic. Six, it is well-known that two elementary schools need to be built along the Old Bridge Corridor. Lakewood schools should not be punished with burdensome expansions because the county has failed to secure property for new school build-outs. Our community needs new schools, but not a Band-Aid plan which will disadvantage the Lakewood community. The county needs to go back to the drawing board to find a solution which addresses overcrowding issues and appropriately-sized additions to eliminate trailers. At the same time, the county should not abandon plans to build two new elementary schools along the Old Bridge Corridor. Full public collaboration should be the norm and not the exception. Local community opposition to these expansions should be respected and recognized. Thank you for your intention to these important issues.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. There being no other citizens who have signed to speak on this matter, I declare the public Moving on to the public meeting. I would like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. We would like to start with the invocation and pledge. Do we have an invocation? Thank you for your. Would you like to introduce yourself and tell us your church and give the invocation? Thank you.
My name is Devon Graham. I'm an ordained minister at Grace Church in Dumfries, Virginia, just down the road on Route 1. And I reside here in the county, over in the Ashland Community.
Thank you. Proceed with the invocation. Thank you.
If we can all bow our heads, please. Father, we thank you for the opportunity today to assemble. We thank you that we have the right to assemble freely. We ask that as we are here today that you will bless each and every member of the school board, each and every person here, with the wisdom that only comes from you. And we just ask that as we conduct business here today, that it will be done in decency and in order. It will be done by your Spirit, which we know that the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, meekness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. We ask that these things will rule over these proceedings and that all that is done will be done to your glory. We ask all these things in the name of the Son, and all these things be done in order. In your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. By the way, Mr. Gray was brought to the board at the request of Mr. Dolch of the Coles District. Thank you, Mr. Dolch. And now for the pledge. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda. A motion is in order.
Madam Chairman, or Chairwoman?
Um.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Madam Chair.
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, I second.
Madam Chair.
Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we add board matters back to the agenda.
I think that was the, we have a vote on the floor right now.
It's me in a second.
And it was seconded. Discussion? We have a vote, please. All in favor? Okay. Did Mr. Dolch raise his hand? Okay, thank you. Just be patient, people. They're all up here saying you're doing great.
Yeah. Because yours is different.
Okay. Where is Ryan? I got him now, Ryan. Ryan did not present. Okay, thank you. Okay. Sorry, we have an error.
Yes, we do. The superintendent's meeting board matters was removed. When I clicked it-
Madam Chairwoman.
Madam Chairwoman, I'd move to amend the agenda to reflect what we had all been sent as board matters and what was posted online, because right now what we just voted on included things that we'd just taken out previously this week.
It's wrong. When I screened, it wasn't. By the time the vote came through, it came up wrong. And now it's wrong.
I'm sorry.
I second hers.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I second the motion by Allison.
She did.
Okay. We're going to have to take that out.
Madam Chairwoman, I refreshed my screen and it disappeared. I would, the screens that are between all of us are not reflecting, that the public is seeing are not reflecting what we should have voted on. Ms. McGowan, can I ask you, what would be the proper procedure for voting for this properly?
I believe the proper procedure would be a motion to amend the agenda- I believe the proper procedure would be a motion to amend the agenda to conform with the notice that was sent to the board of what items would be heard tonight.
So we need a motion to... So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
For members of the public, sorry, we're having technical difficulties with our motions. That was preloaded, and then some screens are showing one thing and some are not showing,
May I have the amendment? We need to type it in correctly.
The motion was that we...
To conform?
Motion to amend.
Amend agenda.
To conform. With the notice.
So.
Notice. Sent to the board. Allison, sent to the board?
Yes.
Earlier this week. Earlier this week.
So I have motion to amend the agenda to conform with the notice sent to the board earlier this week. Okay, seconded by Diane.
I'll second it with the question, please. I know, but I have a question after she's finished.
Okay. Should we take a vote now? You voted? Okay, we're taking a vote.
Yeah, we saw everybody, Willie.
And Mark Schonbrod.
Vote is six yes, one no. Deutsch, one absent.
We're moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
A motion is in order.
Madam Chairwoman. Oh, yeah. You're doing... Sorry. It's okay.
Just her screen anywhere. Okay. A motion is in order.
Madam Chair, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
I'll second.
Is that Mr. Deutsch? All those in favor?
Sorry. I just wanted to draw attention to two items really quick. Where are the numbers on these? Twelve thirteen and twelve fourteen are a couple of rezonings, and I just want to thank staff for clarifying in these that the schools in the areas are over 100% capacity, and therefore, the school division does not support both of these rezonings.
Ms. Williams?
I'd just like to piggyback on Mr. Deutsch's comments. We've worked, I think this time around, with staff very well, and thank you for the additional language that was added to reinforce the school division's position on opposing these developments because of the overcrowding and lack of infrastructure planning for what would be needed to accommodate these new developments. So I just wanted to thank the staff again.
Anyone else? I would like to bring attention to the fact that it is of item 1212, which ironically is National School Nurse Day. I've been a principal for 20 years, and I don't know how long I worked without having a school nurse. And I can tell you, I was at Potomac Hospital so many times that when I walked in, they said, "Mrs. Jesse is back." At that time, we would have students on the playgrounds, asthmatic students, and of course, there was no one to ride with the students to the hospital. And as principal, I assumed that role. But I am so very grateful to have the school nurses in my school. And since you're all here, I would like for you to stand, and I would like for us to give the school nurses a round of applause aboard, too. The other item that I would like to address is the 1216, which is the transportation employees. I will tell you, the only time I rode a bus was during kindergarten week, that first week of school, because I really did not understand how a bus driver would have the responsibility of trying to drive kindergarteners who stood up on seats and changed topic for a living, and they were good at that, and would run out of that bus when their parents were waiting for them. It's, you know, both of these occupations are very important and very critical, and it's not a matter of certification or whether or not you have a degree. I think everybody is a professional, and we should treat them all as professionals. So I want to applaud also to the... My applause goes to the transportation personnel. And of course, library week. Literacy is just so very, very important. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Ms. Roth.
Thank you. Volunteers of the week. Without volunteers in the school, a lot of things don't get done as quickly. At least when you have volunteers coming in, they'll run off papers for you, they'll do other things. I like to read to the kindergartens for second and third graders. So that has always been where I show up. But I also want to chime in with everybody else on school nurses. My grandchildren have been attending schools here, and because of the school nurse at their school identified a problem with my granddaughter's back. And if it hadn't been for her, nobody would have noticed it until time for her to go back for her yearly physical. So that particular nurse knows who she is because I single her out all the time. And she's at Minnieville Elementary School, and I'm not calling Mrs. Carpenter's name at all. So thank you, nurses. Thank you, because I didn't have them when I was in school.
Ms. Jesse. Thank you so much. I just wanted to mention month of the military child, in addition to everything everybody else has said. April's month of the military child. Our military students experience things that our other students don't really go through. We have approximately 4,800 military-connected children served by Prince William County Schools countywide. I was at Reagan Middle School a couple of years ago, attending a special breakfast they had for our military students in appreciation of them and their families. And I asked the students, I said, "Okay, I'm just curious. I want to ask you something. How many times have you moved?" And so we went through numbers, and there was one student who stood up, who'd moved nine times, and he was in middle school. Middle school, and had moved nine times. That's nine times of leaving his friend groups, leaving his support groups, starting in new schools, probably not quite nine times, but there's a lot of times to start in new schools. So to be uprooted that much is hard on the kids. And we are in a unique position in Prince William County to serve so many of those kids. And I know as nurses, you have a lot to do with that, too, those of you here tonight. As a military child myself, a military wife, my kids have deployed with us many times. My daughter is about to marry a military officer. And this is something very important to me, and I'm really happy that in Prince William County Schools, we have embraced our military families and have programs in place to support them. So I want to recognize our month of the military child.
If there's no more discussion, let's take a vote.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Sawyers, motion passed.
Okay, now, we're moving on to item 14. Before we move to item 14, I mean, sorry, item 13, on the adoption of the consent agenda, a motion is in order?
No, you're done.
Oh, I'm sorry. I want it to go to item 13. The sheet says 14. Okay. I'm sorry, there was a discrepancy on my paper and what's in the... I would like to go back and go to item 13, Fred Lynn. But prior to that, I would like to just take this opportunity... Okay. Okay. I just wanted to take this opportunity, there's nowhere on the agenda for this, but I just wanted to... That Bee Simpson, 20 years, we have your PIN and we have your check. So to Bee Simpson, thank you for all that you did. I've known Bee for over 20 years, and every... When she was in Human Resources, she did a wonderful job, and you're doing a great job for us. Now...
Not an approval over there from the...
Yes. Item 13 or 14? I'm not sure which one you are, but 13. We're going to go with 13. Mr. Bixby, please. Fred Lynn. Fred Lynn Middle School, corrective action update.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Jesse, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. On behalf of Principal Neves and the Fred Lynn Middle School staff, I appreciate the opportunity to provide the school board with an update on the school's corrective action At the February 15th school board meeting, Principal Neves and I provided the board with an orientation to the plan. Tonight, I will provide an update on the school's progress in implementing each of the three essential actions in the plan. We will continue to provide you with monthly progress updates in April, May, and June. The first essential action focuses on improved literacy practices. As a result, the school's professional development continues to focus on language arts teachers taking and implementing instructional strategies learned in the course, teaching adolescent learners in reading and writing workshop, referred to as TALL. The course focuses on the implementation of the balanced literacy instructional framework and best practices in reading and writing workshop. These practices center upon focused lessons, guided instruction, collaborative learning, and independent practice. Teachers are also participating in reciprocal teaching training that further supports the balanced literacy framework. Reciprocal teaching strategies include the use of predicting, clarifying, summarizing, and questioning to support increased student reading comprehension. The school's Title I Professional Development Specialist for Reading provides support and coaching on the implementation of these teaching strategies. In addition, the school and division administrators, along with a VDOE School Improvement Specialist, monitors and provides feedback and guidance on the implementation of those strategies. The second essential action focuses on the professional development for all teachers to accelerate English language learners, including the teaching of academic vocabulary, sheltered instruction techniques, and co-teaching techniques, among others noted on the slide. The same monitoring processes found with Essential Action 1 are in place for Essential Action 2. The third and final essential action is the implementation and monitoring of the International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program. This slide outlines the school's work to become an authorized IBMYP World School. We anticipate learning the results of the school's December Authorization Visit sometime this spring, and we will provide an update to the board when that occurs. On March 20th, the school will provide a required triennial update to the VDOE's Office of School Improvement on the school's progress in implementing these three essential actions. The Fred Lynn staff will continue to work hard to implement quality instruction to support student achievement for all of our students. We look forward to returning on April 19th to provide you with another update on the school's progress.
Thank you, Ms. Bixby. This is up for information. Anyone have anything they would like to make comments? Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Chair, I just wanted to thank Mr. Bixby and Principal Neves for all of your hard work in instituting this corrective action plan and following suit. I appreciate all the effort because I know it is a whole school community involvement, and there's a lot of time and dedication and resources going on. And I was just at Fred Lynn recently for my town hall, and the level of dedication from the teachers and staff and everything in the building is felt when you walk in the door, and it's a noticeable marked difference, and I really appreciate all the effort by the school community. So I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Anyone else? I would like to make a comment. You know, I've been in the school system a long time, and I just want clarification because the last time Fred Lynn was here, I know when schools place on corrective action, as a school division, we have always taken corrective action at our level. And so I would like for you to explain, perhaps to the audience, why is necessary for this board action, for this public action before the board? Is this something as a result of a local decision, or was this a state decision?
Ms. Jesse, the Virginia Department of Education requires us, through our memorandum of understanding with them, to provide you with monthly updates at public board meetings until the school is fully accredited.
I would just like to go on record to say that I think a school can take corrective action without that being brought before the public. These are professional people, and I, you know, I've dealt with situations where we've not done as well as we'd like to have done, and it is done, and it's already public, as you know. You know, accountability is a public, is public. But I think this public forum is not something that is in the best interest of our school division or Fred Lynn. So I applaud the people at Fred Lynn, and, you know, I'm an accountability person. This is a business that we're in, and I want to thank you for the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are moving on to item 1401, which is the budget and CIP approval. Ms. Klein, an action is required on this?
Madam Chair.
A motion?
Yes, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the budget as stated and the recommended action with the addition of moving the school nurses on to the option one that was presented to us during the work session, on to the professional scale.
Do I have a second? I'm sorry, I have to take you to the computer part. Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you. I move that we amend the motion to approve the budget as proposed.
I think we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I was making an amendment to the motion.
Okay. So you're making amendment?
The motion is just that we approve the budget as originally proposed, as proposed right here.
We have a motion to return to the original... Do we have, we're going to discussion? We need a second.
Yeah, I think we've been through the budget process. The rules that we had for the budget process specifically stated that board members are not so bound, but otherwise pledged to each other not to offer amendments to the budget in open session, as being dupliative of the work session efforts, allowing for a straight up or down vote on the budget, as reflected in the final vote of the work session. So this just enabled us to go by the rules we had. We had a quick proposal about changing around the pay scale, but that's something we definitely need some more review on and can, you know, move forward on once we have a lot more of the kinks worked out.
Any more discussion?
Yes. Madam Chairwoman? Thank you. We had those two proposals that were given to us last, at the work session, or the markup on the school nurses. Thank you, Mr. Brand, for pulling that up. The option that was just being put forward with the original budget motion just now, it would put our, all of our nurses with multiple years of experience on the same step, and even though they're on the teacher's scale, they would all be on the same step. And I don't think that's in the best interest for nurses. I don't think taking all of you with all your multiple years of experience and putting you all on the same step is the right way to do it. And then the other option that they gave us also, I didn't like either, I didn't think it was the right way to do it. We need to do this, but those weren't good options. We haven't been given a good option yet, and I think we need to work on this some more. And I think, my thought is, we've got the support in the board, but we've got to have the right way to do it so we're doing right by all of you. And I don't want to do this too fast, I want to make sure we're doing right and we're being fair to all of you. That's really important to me. I will support Mr. Deutsch's motion.
Anyone else? I would like to have an item of discussion. Option one, I think option one is perhaps the one option. I have been talking with, to these nurses, and you see them all here tonight, and they asked us to put them on a scale. They didn't ask for a perfect solution. So, and they didn't ask to wait another year for us to come up with a perfect solution. They asked that they be treated as professionals, they asked that they be put on a certified scale with teachers, they showed us the discrepancies. I know that it's not a perfect solution, but we can always relook at our budget again in the future. We have gone, bent over backwards to be fair to teachers. We've even gone so far as to want to go back and right the wrongs from years ago. We've given them a step increase, we've given them additional monies on top, and yet our nurses came here tonight in full force, and apparently, they have heard what the options are. And it's, we are making a judgment for them of whether or not we think it's fair. I think if they felt that there was another option for them, they would have, when they spoke before us, they would have said, "We don't like any of the options that were presented, and we would like to have another option." They didn't say that. They asked us to treat them in a professional manner and that they be placed on a scale. And I think that for all of us who stand up and applaud nurses, and the nurses come and speak, we say we listen to the voices of the people, yet we are deciding what is the best option for them, and we need more time. So that's my view on this. So I guess, if we have any other discussion?
I'm going to say something. Oh. I had to be recognized, I apologize. It's okay. Thank you. To me, this is something I think is long overdue, but I agree with some of what my other colleagues have said. We paid $405,000 for a classification study. Was that the one, I believe last year you and I wanted to get that out of the thing, but we ultimately went through and voted for that study. And the classification study made recommendations about moving people over to the teacher pay scale. They didn't say, "Do it for sure." They made recommendations. And my thought is, to rush this through, as what Ms. Satterway was saying, was to come up with a solution at this. First of all, I would like to identify a funding source, I would like to make sure that this is done and we have the appropriate people to come here. We paid, again, for this study, and if this study and all this documentation that was done, I'd like for them to come up. This can be put on the agenda in April. You, Ms. Jessie, or Mr. Sawyers, Chairman Sawyers, have the ability to put this up for a full discussion about how this process can be done. I don't see any benefit of pushing this through tonight at the, either the 100K or the 900K salary scale adjustment, when we have the ability to look at additional options and still get it put in before the actual budget and the paying starts and going into the following year. So whether it's done now, or if it's done in April, I think we have the ability to look at more evidence and the support from the classification study. It's gonna, obviously, you know, it's not going to happen tonight, but pushing it and looking at it in April and having more time to present the facts and information, I feel much more comfortable about that, rather than pushing this through. I want to see all the options, other than the two that were presented at the C, at the markup session.
Anyone else for discussion? Mr. Brand?
Just so everyone's not confused, there's, on the budget webpage, there's all the questions that the different board members submitted to have answered. And actually, on Fiscally or 2008 Budget Questions, group number four, which was from March 10th, this actually is my question. I had a school nurse in the school system contact me, we talked on the phone, and so I asked the question, let's see if I can, "What is the cost of moving school nurses to the teacher salary scale?" And we got a response, and we got a couple different choices, and the couple choices are vastly different in terms of the dollar amounts and the rationale. So, you know, the cheaper option, if we want to use the word cheaper, and I don't like using that, is 131 plus, and the option that's a little bit more expensive, or maybe a lot more expensive, is 981. So there's a vast difference there. And I will tell you personally, when I read these responses and we discussed them last week, I don't feel like we have the full story. I feel like the responses that we received were definitely, as a former English 11 teacher in the school system who used to teach the county-required research paper and teach about bias, I felt they were a little bit slanted, maybe, in terms of the answers that we received. So I think there's more information out there, I think there's more we need to learn, I think there's, there's more questions than answers right now. I don't think any, any one of us up here would say no to our, to our nurses being, you know, treated more like professionals, or treated at a higher level, or being paid more. You're not going to find any disagreements on that. I think the question is just, are we going about it the right way tonight, by maybe pushing something through without a little bit more information? I feel like I didn't get enough information when I asked that question and how it was responded to me. Maybe we should have done a better job digging more for better answers last week when we had our markup. I think we tried, but we didn't quite get there. But I think we're trying, I don't know if we're quite there. I think we may need a little bit more time, a little bit more information before we quite get there in terms of a final answer on this. I think we're headed in the right direction, though. Our nurses, something does need to change, and I think we're going to get there. I don't know if we're going to get there tonight, but I think we're heading in the right direction.
Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you. Just to, just to follow up on Mr. Brand's comments, you know, I think everybody here on this board does incredibly value the work of our nurses, and, you know, I think some of the things that have happened over the last year have reinforced just how important our nurses are, and just how much we do value, and the way that you all go incredibly above and beyond with some of the situations you all have had to handle. And so, thank you again. This budget increases pay for all of our employees, and that was an important thing that happened in this budget. But, and so I'm not, I'm not quite sure where the, and Ms. Satterway also added an amendment to add a number of nurses to hopefully get us very close to where we have a nurse in every single school, and can hopefully reduce some of the workload as we continue to increase, you know, the availability of nurses. But, so I'm not sure where the idea was pushed out to the community that the board doesn't care and isn't listening, and trying to do what they can to value and appreciate nurses. But one of, and when we got these two proposals, we're not going to vote in one week on a proposal to reclassify employees and change pay scales. I mean, if we're going to reclassify one group of employees, are there other groups of employees we have to reclassify as well? Are there changes we have to make to the proposals? Just as an example, this, this option one, it's been thrown out, was thrown out a week ago as a possibility. As we change, as we were to change everybody over scale-wise, some nurses would get a bump of $600 just to change over to the scale, and some nurses would get a bump as much as $6,000 to change over to the same scale. And, I mean, more power to you all, that's awesome to be able to increase your pay, but, you know, you would think that there's going to be some discussion of, wow, why are some people getting a $500, $400 higher bump than others just because we're changing the scale? And so figuring out a way that's equitable, both in terms of our nurses, but then also to other employees that maybe we have to reclassify and look at employees on a holistic level, this isn't something to rush through in a, in a one-week time period, so.
Madam Vice Chair?
Ms. Rossen?
I don't know who I give this question to. I'll start with the superintendent. If we vote to make this move for nurses, approximately, when do you think we could meet and then bring that forward? Whatever our answer is to this. Mr. Deutsch is saying we need to have time to look some more, study something, get them on the right scale. So how long do you think it will take for us to be able to even address his concerns?
I think that would depend upon whether or not the board wanted to bring the salary and compensation professionals back. And then, if that's the desire, we would contact them and find, you know, give them your board meeting days and try to arrange a time when the board officers would like them to come back.
Under discussion. I do have a question, and I'm not sure if it's in order, and I'm not sure who should answer this. So I'm going to ask the question to the supervisor of nursing and to Mr. Klein, if they could answer a question for me. How long have we been discussing the reclassification? It just seems like this is just something... It just came to us, but how long has the request been or concerns about reclassification of nurses been discussed at our level? I'm not talking about this new firm that came in. I think we're smart enough to make a decision, and I guess the second question I have is, when we say bring it back in April, Mr. Klein, does that mean that we can reclassify, an option to reclassify these nurses before, in this budget cycle? Is there time for us to reclassify them in this budget cycle? I don't, so could, could we have some responses to that from Mrs.? I'd like to have both people up, please.
I think to start with, your first question really was, at what point have we had discussions relative to salary study? And I may turn it over to Mrs. Polk for a minute to talk about, I believe there's been some, some time over the past year or more in which she and her staff have looked at and had that discussion. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
From the perspective of the budget office, this is something that's come forward only in the last, I don't know, four to six weeks. Relative to the budget process, each of the items that we've typically looked at in the budget process have come forward as critical unmet needs. This was not identified as a critical unmet need, therefore it has not gone through the normal process that we would look at relative to what is the proposal, what is the details behind the proposal, what are the, all of the various elements that would go into a specific plan or option. For example, we did have in critical unmet needs, as addressed at markup, putting in additional nurses. So therefore, the response at markup came because several, we had a question from Mr. Brand, I think we've got a question from Mrs. Jessie, and essentially saying, there is a discussion item out there, or a question out there, about moving nurses to the, potentially moving nurses to the teacher scale. And in order to prepare for markup, that information was then, we developed two options, essentially a, what's a minimal cost item option, what's another one that fits more of standard practice, and brought that before the board. There are still a number of unanswered questions relative to what those proposals might be or how they flesh out. Finally, if we go back to the compensation study, there was mention from the compensation study that roughly 50% of nurses nationally are on essentially a classified scale, and about 50% are on the, are on the equivalent of the certificated scale. They did not make a specific recommendation to move it to the certificated scale. They did make a comment that if the board, or a recommendation, that if that is an avenue that the board would like to pursue, then that is something for which additional study should go forth. At this point, no additional study has gone forth.
Madam, Madam Chair?
Ms...
Yes. Okay, I would like to say that while the nurses have discussed this over the past several years, I've been here 15 years, this has been going on for quite a while, we have certainly had our discussions. I was told that we needed to put, we need to come up with a proposal, and that, once we had that proposal in the final... we had that proposal in the final form, it would eventually go to the superintendent, and he would know when to present it to the board members. The nurses drafted a proposal. The proposal was viewed by some, one, one person in particular, unfortunately, she is no longer with us, and that was Ms. Deanna Mize, in the, in the Office of Human Resources. The proposal was also reviewed by my director. Unfortunately, the proposal never got beyond the draft stages, okay? But the nurses worked diligently to come up with a proposal, looking at surrounding jurisdictions and lots of information, so that we could prepare one that would eventually, hopefully, get to the school board for your consideration. So it's not something that we just came up with over the past year. I mean, the fact is, from day one, my opinion as a professional, they should never have been placed on the classified pay scale, but that was the decision at that time of the superintendent and the school board, based on what I was told. So it has gone on. We have continued over the years to continue to hire highly qualified people. And you've heard that from us tonight, you've heard it before, and that is the reason. I mean, it is not so much about the money. It is the respect, that they deserve, the professionalism, they are professionals. I was, we were all received information that it was said that some don't even have a degree, some. That is not true. And we want you to know who the nurses are. They are professionals. If there are questions, we are more than happy to share. I have all the data. I know what, who the staff members are. And, you know, we just need to know that it would be considered. The fact that the information was shared with us about the numbers of nurses that have been recommended for the upcoming school year, I'm thrilled. I don't ever want a secretary, a bookkeeper, any of the ancillary staff to have to provide care for a child. But the bottom line is, folks, regardless of the fact that you're recommending six-point-five nurses, we are going to have a very difficult time getting people to accept these positions when the starting record salary that they're offered is fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars. So we understand that, you know, the decision will be made, we will accept whatever that decision is, but we hope that you hear us clearly and know, we want to work, we would be happy to work with Mr. Klein, whoever, to look at whatever the proposal is, but we need this to seriously be considered. Because I'm telling you, I'm concerned that we're not going to be able to retain some of the people we have, and attract the people that we want to bring on board to serve in the school division. We had a difficult time this school year. We started the year without, without all the, the positions being filled, and for several months, we had twenty-six school nurses rotating to cover schools because the positions were not filled. Many because nurses declined because of the salary. So, you know, whatever we, whatever you do, we accept it, okay? Because we are professionals, and we know that, you know, the decision rests with the board. But we, we would like to have some input, whenever it is possible, into what those proposals might be. Because again, it is not about getting rich. Nurses, we know, none of us are ever going to get rich in this profession, and that is not why we go into the profession. We go into it because we care. We care about people. We care about the children that we serve. So, I don't know if you have any other questions with me.
I guess my only question to Mr. Klein, and then we need to move on and get back to the motion, is that someone said, I think Mr. Deutsch said, we could bring it back in April, or, or put it back on the agenda in April, and still, can, can it be done? If we don't vote on it tonight, can it still be done during this budget cycle? Or will we have to wait another year to do another year of studying for us to move these, this group of professionals to another, reclassify them?
Within the context of the budget, the, in, in essence, I think, yes, there's, there are ways to do it, if that's the simple answer. The distinction is, this budget would be approved, whatever we approve tonight becomes, becomes the approved budget, I'm sorry, the advertised budget. And as we go through, there's a couple more options, in a sense. One is, we, if the Board of County Supervisors makes changes to our budget, then there would be an opportunity in May to make a revision to our budget. Typically, we do that in the first week in May. They may or may not make any changes to our budget, so I'm not going to, you wouldn't necessarily promise that occurs. However, if that did not occur, so if that occurred, yes, you would have another option. If that did not occur, then certainly between now and the, the end of June, because that's really the timeline you're working on, there would be an option in the sense that we could go forward with it. It simply requires, again, identifying an offsetting resource to pay for it.
Ms. Williams, now we need to move on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I haven't had a, a comment yet. I, I made this motion because I recognize the need for, for movement of staff, nurses to more professional salary distinction. I've sat here for a few years, and I've asked for the compensation status before this even board, board, the compensation study before this board even sat, this new board. I, I asked for it specifically because that, and the staffing report that we received, because I recognize that what we have now is a transition of times. We, we've all started in, on one place, and time is moving on. We have four generations in the workplace, each one demanding different things. Sometimes we have things that just have not caught up to date with where we are in the modern times. And I think that our pay scale, and for all of our employees, is one of those things. I also recognize that, you know, we have central office staff, like our HR department, that it's also a need of updating to accommodate these additional requests. It is not a matter of nurses not needing to be put on that scale. I think, as you've heard tonight, that we all agree on that. I, I understand this motion may not pass, and we may not get it done in this budget cycle. But I do want the nursing staff and all of our employees to know that that's something that all of us are thinking about. It, it's a matter of balancing it equitably, not only for our staff, but for our students and the needs of the building. We don't ever sit up here and think, at least I can't say I've ever heard a board member say, you know, "We just should not pay those nurses or those teachers, because we need to get new whiteboards." It, it, it's a matter of trying to get everybody on page, do it fairly, and do it in the best way possible. As we said in the compensation study, there's a recommendation, there's other things, we talked about bus drivers. It's, I've, I've said, most recently in this budget cycle, that we should just redo the entire scale, so that it's equitable for everybody. Mr. Deutsch brings up, and I believe Mr. Wilk brought up a good point, you know, moving certain groups of staff causes problems for other staff, and I recognize that nobody goes into the school system thinking, as a school system employee, thinking that they're going to get rich. I don't think anybody does. We all know that we're, that we're here for the needs of our students and to educate the future. And we do hear you, we do recognize that you have been working on this for some time. I want to say for the public to understand that because things, the nurses have presented something to the superintendent's staff, does not necessarily mean that it's in a, within a budget frame, going to come to the board right away. Because there's multiple things that come to the board behind the scenes. And I'm saying this because a lot of people don't always understand what happens, you only see what, what you get on the dais, and, and that often leaves people feeling like they have not been part of the conversation, or we're not paying attention. I just want to make it clear that we are, and we hear you. And it's not a matter of not wanting to make things equitable, it's just a matter of what this board, I think, has really been doing this whole time, is trying to follow best practices. We're gathering the information, we want to make sure we do it right, and we do it right one time, is from what I'm hearing from the rest of my board members. There's obviously a more urgent push from some of us versus others, but this is something that we've undergone since we sat here. We've changed policies, we've had disagreements, and it's not usually on what we're trying to accomplish, it's on how. And we just ask, or at least I'm asking, for a little bit more patience and, and understanding for a new board, we're trying to do things right for the future, for the long term, and, and not just band-aided, is what I hear my, my fellow board member saying. So, given that, I'm just going to stop talking, but I just want to make sure that you understand, not just nurses, but all staff, that we do hear you, it's just a matter of best practices and going the right way.
I will make one final comment, and then we will vote on this motion. I'm sorry. Ms., which one source?
Justin's first.
Oh, okay. Do you want?
Either one.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Polk, a couple quick, quick questions, you brought up some things. When you were referring to the superintendent at the time who put the nurses on the scale that they were, are we talking, like, back with Kelly, Dr.?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a while, okay, I was...
From the beginning, that's where the nurses were.
Okay, and, okay, so that's, that's where I'm trying to get caught up to speed, because I, I understand that this has been something possibly that has been, not that I'm denying it hasn't, that this has been something in discussion, but the person who I took over for, after she retired, had been on the board for thirteen-something years. So this is all new to me, including the whole thing, the study that I'm curious to see about, that you did, that you handed to Ms. Mize, or what you guys, that, that work you were referring to.
The school nurses did draft a proposal, and yes, but, you know, we knew it would not, I would never take something directly to Dr. Waltz. We know there's a process to get things reviewed, it would have to be reviewed by my director, Mrs. Custard and Mrs. Goss. But at that time, actually, Mrs. Goss was not the associate at that time, but we took it to Mrs. Mize in HR for her to review, to give us some feedback, and she did. And there needed to be some tweaking, and those things were done, you know, over and over. We did a lot of things. But like I say, it never got to a point where anyone said, okay, it's ready. I think, at one point, I talked to Mr. Johnson, and he said, well, it would not go to the superintendent until it was in the final form, he would get it, and then he would get it to the superintendent. But we never got to that point, okay? And it was probably because just a lot more things needed to be done with it. But we do have the draft.
That, that would be important, or at least if it went to facilitate it to Mr. Klein and his staff. So again, because, yeah, if, if we can turn that to him, I would just be curious to see where we're at with that, because I am committed to looking at this this year. Like, I don't want to push this off, I agree, like, this does need to be something we're going to look at. But, but I just want to make sure that we have everything in order. This is news to me. I mean, so, you know what I'm saying? Like, this is all great information to have, when looking at this holistically, and like Ms. Williams said about, kind of, again, a matter of, anyways, I'm going to stop talking. But anyways, yeah, I would like, I would like to do this, and I'd like to get this on the agenda, depending on when the study people can come, or the group that we can get this back and look at this, and have a discussion about this, this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you. Can you email that draft to the school board?
No.
I'm not sure that I can do that.
Dr. Waltz, I guess you, well, Mr. Deutsch, are you...
I'm sure we'll percolate up then, if that's a problem for some reason, but, I, if there's a bunch of drafts floating around, at least you can see what different people are thinking. And then one other, one other question. You had said earlier about, somebody was saying that y'all don't have degrees? What was this that you were making?
Well, that information was shared, and I don't really know where it came from.
So what, what information was this?
That it was said that some of the nurses don't have degrees.
And so who, who shared that information?
I, I don't have the, I don't know. This was just rumor that was going on, okay? But we do, we have...
Mr. Emon, is our mic on?
We have, okay, I'm sorry. We have, as I said earlier, ninety-one school nurses that are paid for by the, the school division. Of those ninety-one, eighty have BS or Bachelor of Science in Nursing degrees, thirteen of that eighty also have master's degrees, eleven have associate degrees in nursing, meaning they went to school two years, earned their nursing degree, and...
Right, well, like, that, that's the exact information that staff told us.
And one nurse has, has a diploma, a hospital diploma in nursing, which was something that occurred many years ago.
Right, so like, that, that's the exact information staff told us, I think, last week. So I guess that's why I was asking why, or where different information was coming out about.
Madam Chair, point of...
I don't know, Mr. Deutsch.
All right, just, just curious.
I'm sorry, I don't...
Literally, the numbers you gave us are literally the numbers that Dave Klein gave us, a week ago, so.
That's, that's great. I don't know, but, you know, we wanted to make sure that, you know, if you didn't have that, we, we do have the absolute, you know, exact numbers.
Mr. Joyce, it's actually in the answers on, to the question set from March tenth, it's just framed, and from a different perspective. So it's not written to us, the question wasn't answered in the same format that you answered it for us. It's kind of in reverse order, but it, it's there.
Yeah, I mean, but the way she broke the numbers down are the same way Dave broke the numbers down for us. So just curious what it is.
Thank you. In my closing statement to all of you, I've been here for twenty years, and I've known these nurses since they started, and I've known that they've wanted to be reclassified for at least ten or fifteen years, and this is not new, and I don't know if we need an in-depth study to determine whether or not we should give them, reclassify them. The people are here tonight, says to me, they want to be reclassified. And I just want, whatever happens here, I want you to know that I stand with you, and that we will try to do something in an expeditious manner. I will talk with the superintendent and with Mr. Klein, and we will get back. But at this point, thank you very much. I think a motion, the motion is to amend the main motion to approve the budget as presented. So, do we, is, okay, so do we have a, a motion?
The motion was already made.
All in favor, all, I'm sorry, all in, all in favor? The motion is to amend the main motion to approve the budget as presented. And so, at this point, we need to have a vote on that. So, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Justin second, and Mr. Deutsch made the motion. Discussion? Call the vote. Justin, Mr. Wilk, Mr. Deutsch, who was the other one? Ms. Allison, and Sean. Okay, opposed? Jessie, Williams, and Ross. And we've got a enter not present. Did I leave someone out?
Point of order, the motion would pass, not fail.
The vote is four yes, Brand, Deutsch, Satterwhite, and Wilk. Three no, Jessie, Ralston, Williams. One absent, Sawyers.
We are, the main motion? The main motion is to approve the FY CIP and FY... The main motion is to approve the FY CIP and FY 218 school budget in a total amount of, what is this, $1,676,695,551, and further approve the revenue sharing agreement between the Prince William County School Board and Board of Supervisors, and further direct the superintendent forward to the requested school budget by fund totals to the Prince William County Board of Supervisors, and further request the school board supervisors to approve the appropriated and appropriate the FY 218 school budget by lump appropriation in the amount of $1,675,695,551 by fund totals in previous years. Is that the end of that? Okay, do we have, we, we're ready for the motion? Take the vote? All those in favor? By show of hands?
Are we voting on the budget now?
Yes, yes, we are.
The main motion, as presented.
As presented.
Are we doing discussion? I'm sorry.
That's where we're at.
Okay. I'll call for discussion. Discussion again?
Okay, I just want to make sure I read the Declaration of Personal Interest pursuant to Policy 114, Regulation 114-1, Conflict of Interest, Virginia's Local and State Conflict and Interest Act, and conjunction with the school board's vote on the budget, I've been confirming in open session that the school board, superintendent's staff, and by virtue of this declaration to the public, that have informed the fact that my wife is an employee of the school system prior to my election to the school board, I confirm that this relationship will not prevent me from voting on this matter or any other matter impacting teachers impartially, fairly, objectively, and solely in the public interest, and I sign that. That's all.
Okay, hold on. Okay, okay, now we can go for the vote. Just any more discussion? Those in favor? Those in favor?
Of the whole budget.
Nothing about the budget.
Yes.
Ms. Ralston?
Yes.
Mr. Doach?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer's? Ms. Sawyer's absent? Hold on. Ms. Satterwhite?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie? Is it Jessie? No. Do I have any in there? Not present. Which one? Go ahead. He's not present. Okay. Is that it? Okay, we're ready. Save, he should come up.
Vote is five yes, Brand, Doig, Ralston, Satterwhite, Wilk. Two no, Williams, Jessie. One absent, Sawyer's. Motion passed.
There being nothing further discussed for this board, this board meeting is adjourned.